Okay, we're ready.
Yes.
Good. John, you have it?
I'm Terry.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Webster's zoning board of appeals meeting for May 9th, 2023. This evening, we have two table items, one scheduled matter and two administrative matters to address. We do have a call board this evening. Welcome to the team of members that are stepping in for two of our members who are out this evening. Call roll.
Mr. Newtong.
Here.
Mr. Barone.
Here.
Mrs. Bolo.
Here.
Mr. Centola.
Here.
Mr. Shore.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Mr. Artuza.
Here.
Do you have proof of the application or this evening's matters? And if you could please stand quietly.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation under our invisible liberty and justice for all.
Our first application this evening is going to be 1045 Ridge Road.
Take five oil change located at 1045 Ridge Road. Apple Creek Quadro Development is requesting a use variance to allow the construction of a 1600 square foot oil change facility on a 1.25 acre parcel in an SBL order 079.15-1-8.009 located in an MC meeting with Tennessee commercial district under section 350-18 of the quote unquote town address.
Good evening. Nice to see you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight on this application. You have a foreman application for proposed take five oil change to locate at 1045 Ridge Road. The proposal requires a use variance. In that application package, hopefully you've had a chance to review it. The site is this remaining, sorry, it's this remaining 1.25 acres right here. Ridge Road, Roosters Ice Cream, and this area is a little dated, but you know, self-storage is back here. This is the last remaining piece. There's not a whole lot of interest in, there hasn't been any interest in developing this for any of the uses that were permitted by code. Brian McKinnon is here tonight. He has been working with this property, representing this property about 15 years, something like that. On behalf of the property owner, Evan Patel is our engineer, and Mike Hay from Quadro Development that's developing the take five oil change operations in our area is here tonight as well. So, that is 1.25 acres. It is the last remaining piece in a fully developed area. It's a mixed-use area. I think you guys know it very well. It is literally just a little bit across the street here. So, you know, there's a kind of mixed zoning in this area. The property is owned MC, but we have several zoning districts kind of surrounding it as well, and a mixture of different types of uses and development. We've got a bank here, we've got self-storage, we've got some apartments, we've got, you know, large retail across the street. We have a number of auto-related uses that have popped up along Ridge Road, and we've got some offices, we've got a funeral home. It's just kind of like a melange of different local kinds of uses along the corridor. It's not the heart of the commercial area, but it's not really far from the center. However, there is no traffic signal here, and when Krista came in to get the development approvals for the self-storage, there was a condition put on that approval by the planning board seeking to have access management on Ridge Road and not allowing a driveway directly on Ridge Road for this parcel. So, the parcel is kind of, you've seen the application, so you know, limited in size, we have limited frontage, there's really no room for growth, the area around it is developed, it's very small. The K5 oil change is actually an ideal type of a use here because it's a very, very low traffic generator. Not a low traffic generator, but a super-low traffic generator. They expect, you know, if they're successful here, you know, 30 to 40 cars is typical for an oil change. So, it's a very low traffic use. They can work with this shared access with Roosters. Roosters is present here tonight. They came out to the planning board. We presented a concept plan to the planning board a couple months ago. They came out to support that application. The planning board did issue a favorable letter of recommendation, which you probably have in your pocket and have a chance to see. I think we're making some kind of cosmetic changes and addressing some things that the planning board brought up before we go back there, but we cannot proceed with this process unless we secure a use variance to allow the use. So, the application before you addresses all of the standards and criteria, the big one being the financial hardship. As you know, we have to demonstrate that the property does not, cannot generate a reasonable return for the uses permitted by the code. You're familiar with the MC district list of permitted uses. They're primarily retail and office uses. The property has been on the market for quite a few years. There's literally been no interest in this parcel. It is the remaining piece, like what was under a regular shaped parcel, so the self-storage really couldn't use it. They went back in the larger, I think, like a five-acre piece back here, maybe a little more than five acres, and they connected right over here, and it was just a small frontage piece. As far as the use variance criteria, we have provided you some information addressing the financial hardship. Brian did submit a letter. He submitted not only the marketing efforts on this piece for the last, I think, two or three years, but we gave you some of the information that you saw previously, because the financial hardship with the larger piece has always been an issue. They just didn't have a user at the time for this piece. But they have had it on the market. They've had it on the market without any limit as to the use, potential use of the property. They haven't had any price on it, so they haven't priced it out of the market. It's just been out there and available for anybody interested in building anything on the site. I think you're properly aware that construction costs are high, there's lots of vacant space, so the type of users that are interested in building a new, a new store on a relatively small parcel, not on a corner, not on a traffic signal, without a driveway, not in the kind of commercial heart of the town, is really limited. So, the only property to generally use that's expressed an interest and that's actually come to contract is for the development of the take five oil change, which is why we're here tonight. As far as the other hardship documentation that we provided you, it's in dollars and cents, proof. The property owner has been paying taxes, insurance, carrying costs related to the property, so we've given you those numbers in the application. Let's see, the... Okay, the uniqueness of the property. Again, I think we went into the fact that it doesn't have a traffic signal. It has, you know, specifically a condition prohibiting a driveway. So, all of those kinds of physical aspects of the property, those characteristics are unique to the property, and those are essentially the limiting factors that create the financial hardship. Obviously, if this was a larger parcel or something different, where it was on a traffic signal, it would be a completely different matter, but we have, you know, limited size, limited frontage, no driveway, you know, not a central location. We might be across from some large-scale retail, but we kind of have like an interesting co-tended mix along the corridor, a little hodgepodge there. So, this seems to be kind of the perfect fit. The character of the neighborhood, are we going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood, use or not? Probably the most significant benefit of this use to the corridor is that it is a low traffic use. It's a daytime operation. You know, they operate basically like office hours or retail hours. The hours that can be laid out in the application for you, let's see, these are the typical hours that could be adjusted depending on the kind of local demand and management. 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM Monday to Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Saturday, 9 to 5 on Sunday. Like I said, they can be modified. They don't do heavy repairs, they don't paint cars, they provide very limited services. Oil changes, tire pressure checks, topping off some fluid, fluids, fluid exchanges, air and cabin filter replacements, and weather blade replacements. They describe themselves as kind of an upscale operation in that there isn't a waiting room. The customer just drives in, stays in their car, they get their service, and they move on. This is a small building. It's 1600 square feet approximately with three bays. The orientation of the building is deliberate. We want to create kind of the most attractive, least impactful view of the building, so we put kind of the shorter side of the building at the street. We did, at the request of the planning board, kind of spruce it up, and we're working on, you know, landscaping and architecture and that kind of stuff that the planning board will, you know, focus on all those details. So, we want to make this look as attractive as possible. We want it to blend in, but as far as the use, the intensity is about as low an intensity of use as you could find. So, that should not alter the character of the neighborhood in any way. And we're going to design this, you know, it's a brick building. It's not their standard building. They, you know, already upgraded it to a brick building to fit with the character of the neighborhood and some of the other more recent developments. They want to do quality, you know, really quality building here so that it's already been included, and again, we'll continue with the planning board should we secure use variance from this board. And whether the alleged hardship is self-created, again, it arises from the actual physical characteristics, characteristics of the property, the location of the property, the limited size, and kind of limited interest in a property that just doesn't have those things, those characteristics that, you know, companies are looking for when they want to invest in building to new building. It's expensive to build a new building, so when these companies are coming looking for a site, it's got to have all of the requirements, the traffic signal, the corner location, you know, all those kinds of things that they look for. So, that is our application in a nutshell. As I said, there is a letter of recommendation from the planning board. The other one was also submitted to county planning. They also sent back the response to the referral. There were no comments or issues of concern. I understand that the PRC has not issued any comments, but we'll look at this again in connection with the planning board application. Let's see if I missed anything. Quite a bit of material that I submitted in support of the hardship, but I don't know if there are any questions about it. I'm going to stop there and see kind of where the board might want to go.
Yeah, so a couple of questions. You've referenced the size a couple of times. In terms of the size, can you compare it for like the Valvoline or Minnekey, which I believe is two, two to three parcels over? How do you compare? Is there a representative from take five here?
With Brian, how many have in that?
Is there anyone that's familiar with the operations of the building that can step up and answer some questions? I'm familiar, certainly.
I do not work for take five. I'm with Quadro Development. My name is Mike Hay, and I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
Yeah, just to dive a little bit deeper in terms of how does this size compare to some of the competitors in the area? There's a new one on the corner of Jackson and Hole, I'm sorry, Jackson and Ridge Road. There's Valvoline down in what we would call West Webster on Empire. There's a Minnekey, which I believe is in the Goodwill Plaza area. Correct? I think that's my, I'm not mistaken.
Mavis.
Mavis.
Certainly significantly smaller than Mavis. We've done actually one Mavis project in Pennsylvania, and they, that one we did was around 4,000 feet. They also, you know, with regards to Valvoline, they are similar sized buildings, but Valvoline offers significantly more services. Take five oil change really wants to be a five to 10-minute stay in your car, limited service, so there's no transmission. So, with regards to, I guess, nuisance for neighbors and stuff like that, it's as minimal as possible when they run very clean operation. The building size is similar to which if you live or a Valvoline. I do believe Valvoline is around 2,000 feet, so 400 square feet plus than a Valvoline. They're a prototype. I'm not exactly sure specifically.
So, the Valvoline, the Jiffy Lube or to the Valvoline is what we're...
Yeah.
Three made, yeah.
Three made, yeah.
Help me understand the adjoining parcel, if I'm not sure. Is this being, you're only going to take 1.3 acres of this? Isn't it a total of 7.1?
No, the 7.1, so originally...
Because there is a map that shows the whole...
Yes, yes, that was, so this is one quarter, and this is the remainder of that. This is what was developed for the self-storage.
Oh, that's right. Got you, got you. Okay, I was confused by the numbers.
Right. The reason I put it in there is because they really have been marketing this, and even though it was connected to that, it may as well have been two separate parcels, you know, it was barely connected.
No, I understand. I was confused by the numbers in your library.
It's not like you could build anything over this area.
Could somebody dive a little bit deeper into the marketing that's been done? When was this originally listed? What was some of the interests that came to the table, did not come to the table? How long has it been listed?
I'm Brian McKinnon, and I'm with Krista Development. We've been associated with the site for 14 years from the original construction of the Webster Green apartment from the rear, all the way through to today. It's been extensively marketed via site signage, broker letters, networking, word of mouth. A unique decent property, as you well know, as the chairman mentioned, it was part of seven acres originally, and it was, as Betsy mentioned, theoretically two parcels, even though they were one tax parcel. So, we've been before the board a couple of years ago for the self-storage facility for a similar reason. We had no frontage. It was kind of, this piece was sort of connected, but it really didn't do anything for it. So, we own the self-storage. So, from a marketing perspective, we have virtually no interest in that, because it was lined up like in the back. So, we, our group owns it, and we have a contract with Life Storage as a management company. So, that was sort of how we self-marketed it, if you know what I mean. We created our own demand by doing the self-storage because there was demand in the area. It's actually, just for what it's worth, seeing the board was involved in that a bunch a couple of years ago. We're at pace right now where we anticipated after a full year, and we're only six months in since we got our CBO in October, so it was a great decision. Clearly, the community has embraced the location. We continue to market this, and until Mike's group came along and said, "We've got the perfect use. We don't need everything that Betsy said the property doesn't have." We're just hoping someone will come along and show interest in a quick favor.
It looks like I read about the carrying cost over the past three years, $46,000, I can't find it, $45,000 in real estate taxes, $12,007 in liability insurance, and $21.5, and I guess that's internal Krista marketing and trying to move this site at a shoe leather caper, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we've, it's been subdivided away from the large seven-acre parcel, so, you know, going back, we've been carrying the seven acres until recently for many, many years, paying the taxes, liability insurance, marketing, overhead, a lot of, a lot of expense.
For the record, I don't have it in front of me. Josh, do you mind just highlighting some of the allowed uses?
Sure. Got it, I'm calling the book. Yeah. So, permitted uses in the MC district include things like appliance sales, bar tavern, or cocktail lounge, a daycare facility, commercial print shop, drugstore, funeral home, floor sales, grocery store, medical and dental clinics, office machine sales and service, restaurants, variety stores, and communication towers.
How many employees do you anticipate?
Typically, four employees, three to four, depending on demand and depending on the day. So, one manager and then typically one employee per batch.
And an ideal day would be to cycle through 40?
Fifty, fifty, if good, above average would be 50. And yeah, again, it's only oil, which is a much faster process.
I guess I would just, I would highlight that the intensity of this use is much less than some of the allowed uses that Mr. Artuza just mentioned.
That was a major contention for the Valvoline down the street. People said, "Well, I'd rather see a fast food restaurant." Fast food has hundreds of cars a day, whereas Valvoline only had, you know, 20, 30 cars a day, 40. It was a Jiffy, because it was a Jiffy on the corner of Jackson Bridge. But the point, the point is that the neighbors are saying they don't want the traffic. And this operation actually had less traffic than a fast food restaurant, which is a lot of that's owned, so the traffic was not an issue, not an issue.
Yeah, this site really can't fit. They can't accommodate a fast food restaurant. We were talking, this is a very small building with a very small parking lane. You know, if you talk about a fast food restaurant, you're talking about drive-through lanes, tremendous amount of parking. And they want, and they all want a traffic signal.
And to bear that out, I will buy a intersection of Jackson Bridge a lot. Very few cars, so what they're telling us is the fact of truth.
In terms of noise generation, are there any air tools that we use? Will the doors be down when the air tools are here?
Yes, typically, the doors are down when they're doing their work. I believe there might be a compressor for tire pressure, but, or for deflating tires, but other than that, the doors should be shut during operation.
They're not doing tire rotation, right? So, it's, there's really no impact rigging or anything like that?
Correct. There's no, there's no tire rotation, there's no brakes, there's no mufflers, there's no thing. It's just oil change, wipers, and cabin filters.
And... That's a question. Whether it's appropriate, I guess, being that there's Mavis, there's Jiffy Lube, there's all these other oil changes kind of within the area, assuming the market research has been done, that the area can support it and it'll be a business for long term, as we mentioned, that there are vacant buildings out there, so is, you know, assuming you guys plan on being there long term?
Yeah, absolutely. And with specifically like tenants like Mavis, they don't necessarily consider them apples-to-apples competitors. Yes, a lot of companies offer oil changes, but not take five deals. They differentiate themselves because they, it's the only one, and I can speak for only myself, I really don't like going into those weird little waiting rooms, and you do a stay in your car, it's no podcast. So, that's kind of how they view themselves as the next generation oil change that will entice a lot of customers.
The other question I had, the site plan, as you hear, you have a 50-foot setback, and you have a 75-foot setback, and that's all based on the MC. Is that, are those fixed? I know that's per our code, but is that, looking at an area, it looks a lot further, closer to the road than, it's at ESL, I think, that is adjacent to it and Roosters.
I'm, you know, I'll let Evan speak to the engineering, but I do know there's some significant topographic issues with the site. There's that hill that is there, and the further south you move, you run into some areas that look like a layout in stormwater, but I'll certainly share that.
So, with that too, with the, I think it fell from hostage. The DSL, you know, they have the double stacked parking in front of it, which kind of pushed the building back and sure they would have been more forward. You know, the other thing we're looking at, and we did meet with Roosters, you know, kind of looking at line, line of sites. The bank has some significant landscape and trees, long bridge. I modeled the site. We have, you know, rendering showing the trees, you know, from the intersection and basically everything, there's no view until you get past the existing trees there. You get past, excuse me, you get past the trees there, and then your line of sight cuts, you know, doesn't hit our building, it's Roosters, which is awesome. So, you know, that with being further setback, offsetting the entrance so that we don't create a lined-up entrance, which then creates a four-way stop, which then kind of confuses everybody, I would feel, in this situation. Roosters can operate with the vehicles, vehicular circulation as is, and the customers with a little intense use can turn and left into take five and go right out.
I'm just going to say this, provide a little for Roosters before I get over here. I mean, there are people on bicycles, there's people everywhere. I mean, having a nice, low-intensity use sharing the driveway, I think is an extra plus because of the nature of the...
So, you require no area variances? Obviously, you're just coming into the use variance. Yeah, it's an after sign tag.
I think the signage is code compliant.
Yeah, we anticipate all the signage to be code compliant.
You said it.
I anticipate.
I'm telling you, it's on...
I'm not trying to review the answer.
When we, when I talk to a client...
Oh, now he's shuffling.
I had our sound news vendors render code compliant actors.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. I would certainly welcome Roosters if they're willing to come up and speak when they're first active as this being their immediate neighbor.
My name is Mary Amato. I am owner of Roosters. We would love to have them in there. We can stare at a new jerk for how many years? And as I said, it is not going to be high traffic now. It's more daytime that they're going to have people going in and out. It's nighttime that we're insane on. It's nighttime that we're insane over there. Yeah, you've all been there, I can see it. It would be nice to see an actual building and not a empty lot. We welcome the neighbors.
Do you anticipate using their parking lot at night when they're not with them?
I can't stop my customers, they park on my front lawn, they park over on Life Storage, they park up and down Ridge Road. I suspect the customers will go over there. I hope you won't kick them out.
If they're closed, I.
Yeah, they won't go during the day.
Yeah.
Please, they park on the driveway and jump over the fence because they can't walk from the parking lot. And I doubt we'll hear their compressors because ours are so loud and we'll never be able to hear them. Seriously. We would welcome them.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming to the La Crosse game.
Oh, you were there last night?
I hope you both.
Oh, you're the one that helped me. I was.
I didn't know.
You're pushing. Thank you again.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak for or against this application? Seeing no one, we're going to return the discussion back to the board. We're opening public comment pursuant to NYCR, section six seventeen of the Department of Code, a micro motion as an unlisted action for this application.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Mr. Ito?
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions.
Yep.
So what I'm trying to understand is in terms of the, the financial hardship, the, this piece was cut away from a larger piece as a result of other improved, okay, improved developments of the larger piece, or is this a kind of a leftover piece? Am I understanding that right or how long would you figure?
I, I would say your last statement is accurate. It was a leftover parcel to the east of Brewsters. The storage units are built to the south west, south and southwest of Brewsters. It was kind of what I would call a hanging parcel.
Okay, unless the, the applicant that, or not unless the applicant, but the seller who is indicating the financial hardship, that's one of the things. In other words, the, the seller is the same owner of a larger piece. This piece, this kind of leftover, is selling to Quadro, do I have that right?
I believe you have that right, it's Krista. Can the applicant step back?
Okay, in, in that regard, with respect to the, the marketing efforts, the, the proposal or the application or presentation from Woods, I'm a little bit confused because it sounds ambiguous. When they talk about their efforts over the last three years, which was the second paragraph on page three, and then in the next paragraph, they talk about that the remaining parcel has been closed on the market for the past several years. I'm assuming in a one state, they're talking about the larger piece. And in the latter instance, they're talking about the piece that's actually before the board done with that, accurate?
I believe that's where some confusion came from.
Yeah, I didn't mean to confuse you, John. The, what I did is we spoke to the marketing efforts for this piece because that was relevant to this application. However, this isn't like one parcel that somebody sliced down the middle. It happens to be like two parcels that are kind of just connected. And so since they did secure, we did, we did put in the marketing efforts on the larger piece because that small piece has been marketed individually, but it was previous to that marketed as part of a whole and there was still no interest in that piece.
Right, I, I, I understand from a persuasive standpoint, but I, what I'm trying to sort of out record is clear. So the board can vote on the fact that that's really good. There's a latter piece that Quadro is applying for the oil change business. You can typically work with the marketing efforts exclusively on that in over what period of time?
This is Brian McKinnon again, we're the seller developer. The marketing efforts were site signage, which we had on the property for, until we had our contract with Quadro. Outreach that we have through just our network of brokers and real estate leasing agents that we deal with through our development business, which is a lot of commercial retail office properties in the portfolio. Word of mouth. Typically, for what it's worth, as you probably well know along the ridge, site selectors go by signage. They go with demographics, traffic count, DOT, and the signage on the property is really what drives people to the location. And that was something that we had on the property right on the top of Quadro, on the foot of the contract.
Okay, so with respect to site signage, network outreach and word of mouth, does that include the conventional multiple listing or LoopNet or something that would relate to commercial properties?
When we had it listed with, I think it was CB Richard Ellis years ago, they were affiliated with that, with LoopNet. Didn't have any success and that's when we took the Life Storage facility and did it for ourselves, which created this parcel. Krista Development's website.
CB Richard Ellis, that was no, that was with respect to the larger parcel, right? Not this, this little parcel?
No, it was for all seven acres and we had zero luck. So.
And with respect to, with respect to this particular parcel, how long has this been marketed for? Not, not the overall parcel, but just where in the LTO letter? And if the remaining parcel has remained on the market for the past several years, does that mean it? I guess I don't know if that means on the market for several years then related to the parcel.
So I, I understand the distinction. We received site plan approval from the town of Webster and subdivision approval of the seven acres that allowed us to develop the self-storage facility. So from that moment on, we now have the ability to market this parcel by itself for the first time.
So he's asking what date is that?
Sometime twenty-one maybe, I don't, so let's say two years.
Okay, so the duration of the marketing in two years for this particular parcel? And the, of the carrying cost of eighty thousand dollars is set over a three-year period? So should that really be a two-year period carrying cost?
Yeah, you know, I, I apologize, but I, I'm giving numbers to Betsy that we get from our accounting department, so. Could there have been an overlap of six months? I, I don't know, I mean, it's tens of thousands of dollars. Here's the value.
Mr. Ito, what, this is in the second paragraph totals about eighty thousand dollars. Now, being that thirty-six, well, it's a penalty gap, and it's closer to twenty-four more.
Like, I guess, before we, let me just clarify, the CBRE ladder from November second, twenty twenty, is this specific to, is this about the cutoff date?
I don't know. I believe, yeah, the subdivision took place at some point during twenty twenty-one.
I can tell you, I have the planning board approval, it's May twenty twenty-one.
Okay, but the variance, I think this was provided to the zoning board, it was the tail end of twenty twenty.
Exactly.
Courtesy of people that had some dates of the letter, so that's when.
Yes.
The process started, thanks.
A couple of weeks after that. Been a few years.
So I think what we concluded is that it could be two years and three months, two years and six months. In terms of these estimates that were provided, I was really looking at them as estimates.
Well, they are because you pay taxes and insurance every year, right? So you've been to the, the expenses that you provide.
If I can ask the board?
Go ahead.
To determine, I, I just want, I want the board to be clear on, on what the facts are. And in order to prove an unnecessary hardship, the act that was demonstrated, two, I warned that each and every permitted use under the social regulation for that district where the property is located is one, that the act cannot realize a reasonable return provided that a lack of return is substantial, that demonstrates that enough in financial evidence. So that's, that's fine with the year. That the presentation is, is basically what's, that, that the board will watch in the best, whether two years is enough or not enough, or, you know, whether fifty or fifty thousand dollars is enough or not enough that the board will rely on for, for that particular property. Two, that the alleged hardship relating to the property in question is unique and it does not apply to a substantial portion of the neighborhood or the district. Three, that the use experience will alter the essential character, I think that's pretty clear to that's looking. And then four, that the alleged hardship has not been self-created. And so with respect to, I guess the feelings is one is for making sure you're clear on the financial evidence that you have it in four, that this larger piece that has been sold off, developed or approved for development is this remaining piece, I will admit, if it's an oddball piece or it's that, you know, a kind of leftover, the other ones were easier to market, that that doesn't contribute to the self-creation hardship.
I, I guess.
That, that, that's all.
Yes, I guess I think, I feel like we need to get clear on this because my understanding is that you've tried to market the entire seven acre parcel for, how long, fourteen years, seven?
Probably ten years.
For ten years. They elected because they weren't having interest in that larger parcel, am I correct? They elected as Krista to develop the self-storage themselves because they were getting no market interest. Am I misrepresenting that? Okay. So they elected because they had no market traction to construct the self-storage. Then constructing the self-storage on this book called hanging parcel, I'm assuming it didn't make sense to you to have storage wrapped around if it would be useless, you wouldn't have any storage in that.
I think it was probably need to connect with the.
Right. So after you developed it yourself because of lack of interest over a ten-year period, not just a two-year period, you've now segregated that because you've got the storage units and now you've marketed that specific to itself. But in essence, this has been marketed for ten years, am I correct? So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not following John well.
When you look at, when you look at the criteria, I just want the board to be satisfied that it's twenty thousand. That there's a distinction between the entire piece and this hanging piece that's left and whether or not proof of the larger piece that flows into this application and gains the advantages of the marketing adwords and difficulties that the larger piece has. And then the board is deciding the distinction between the two because the latter kind of, kind of smooths it all together. And I just want the facts to be delineated, understand for the segregated piece, some of the marketing and financial hardship remains to the greater pieces.
Right, I understand.
I only have an opinion, I, I just want the board to understand that, what the criteria is.
And I think what they presented by the CBRE ladder is specific to the larger parcel for the allowed uses. It's not specific to this hanging piece east of Brewsters.
The reason, so maybe it was confusing to include that, I could have just included the last three years and demonstrated that they've been paying taxes and insurance and costs and explained what the issues are with the parcel. The reason I gave you the larger background is because it really just shows how far back the hardship. That, that hardship, they still included this portion of property. And what unique about this, this isn't a square that was divided so that they could build self-storage. The self-storage required a use variance. I'm going to guess that the board probably preferred a self-storage not to be on the frontage on Ridge Road, right? They're, even though they're connected, if you look at what the original parcel was, they really are like two separate parcels, just kind of like tied together. So that's why I gave you, I gave you extra hardship evidence that maybe I didn't need and I don't, didn't mean to confuse you, but I really just want to show that if somebody wanted to put a tackle belt on the frontage, they could have done this seven years ago, six years, it's been on the market. And I can tell you that other brokers have talked to me and said that they looked at different sites and, you know, picked other locations that I have probably been in front of this board or this planning board on for different, you know, national retailers and this site has been passed over. So that is why you have kind of more information than maybe you needed, I didn't mean to confuse anybody. And I'm happy to go through the list, I mean, you go through the list of permitted uses.
We already did.
Okay, I was going to say many of those uses, the parcel is just by definition too small. It certainly can't handle the traffic and the parking. And then some of them, like a funeral home, there's a funeral home a few doors down. You know, some of these specific retail uses are very specialized and, you know, I think everybody knows, it's kind of known that it's tough to find retail right now with all the online kind of competition for sales and whatnot. So if you have questions about any particular use, I'm happy to speak to it. I don't think it would be difficult to go through, but there, and I think a lot of it is actually common sense.
So just stepping back to the, to this specific section. You've got site signage, broker ladder, word of mouth. What bubbled to the surface as a result? Just specifically those reach outs, what bubbled to the surface? Let's say it's two and a half. Just saving that, that's it, correct?
Correct. We, you know, we've seen this before. Ridge Road is the best Webster has and we've seen use variance, after use variance. There just doesn't seem to be the interest that we'd like to see. It would be great, I remember one of those clamors to buy a front yard in Ridge Road, but we haven't seen it.
This is, this is a unique parcel, as you, as you well know, Betsy's our particular. I think if I could just say one thing relative to our relationship with Brewsters, I mean, we're neighbors. We own the Life Storage and we worked hand-in-hand with them to create an access through the existing driveway that didn't hinder their operation. And you probably know that the fifty feet of frontage that we have on the ridge where our monument sign is for Life Storage, think about how much that exacerbated our issue for the last ten years in and of itself, we really had fifty feet of frontage and we have this massive driving range in back. So there's been a real issue here and I'd just like to say one thing, if I could. I was there when we developed Webster Green Apartments, so for all to be the opinion forever. I think we've come a long way, I mean, we've got a beautiful apartment community that's done well. We sold land in Conifer who built a formidable senior community in the back. We were able to put a nice storage facility in there that has proven to be a great demand from the town. We've got a great neighbor in Brewsters and we've now got another opportunity here with Quadro. So we're seeing this as the culmination of almost fifteen years of redeveloping a very large and awkward piece of property in the, in the town.
Could you help me understand next, the, the, yes, it would be directly opposite of Brewsters, that there's vacant parcel there? Is that invited?
No, that, that's a great question. That was sold to, I, I probably shouldn't say the person's name, it's a judge, wants to decamp. But that was sold to a, a party that was going to a medical building there. We had nothing to do with it, they wanted to buy some land from us, we made a transaction. And that's got to be, boy, that might be six, I don't even know, six, seven, eight years. It's been a very long time. We have nothing to do with it, it's their parcel. We did, however, when we did the self-storage facility and we provided a new driveway to the back, we've given them the ability to tie into our driveway for access. So not for me to say what the town does, but if the town wants to do some traffic management there in the future or should that parcel ever get developed, we also accommodated that with the town by granting it east over our driveway to allow access to that property that we no longer own, we haven't for years. to allow access to that property that we no longer own, having for years.
Okay. All right. Back to the, to the board with respect to the four key parameters. The act cannot generate a reasonable return for permitted uses. Any further questions, comments, or thoughts?
I guess it'd take, it'd take long enough for the ideal client for this parcel to appear and he'd be to have kind of, because I think he said, I don't think there's a lot of uses, retail or otherwise, that can make do with any no-punish access along the road. Yeah, based on the size of the parcel, if you manage economically, feels that whenever stars align, they found the asset we want climbing through this parcel.
If, if we act on this, I, I'd probably suggest that we adopt page two of the letter dated March twenty-second, twenty-third. Do not reiterate that, knowing that there probably is some flex in the numbers that you provided based on that window of when this parcel clearly was a singular parcel. Understood? Are we in agreement? With respect to the alleged hardship related to the property is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood? I mean, certainly the, the parcel isn't a great one. I think it's a very, very location. But it is unique in terms of its footprint, square footage, the elevation change, I believe that's a pretty significant elevation change for this property. Somebody else mentioned it earlier. Ridge Road, lack of Ridge Road access.
That is close it, it's a great location, but lacking those really access to try to share the driveway. Whether or not it's truly a deterrent, but if you're going in, you're certainly not in the parcel. And it's not big, so there's, there's not a lot you can do, you're just operating a new space.
The request of variance of credit will not alter the such a character of neighborhood. We've provided a few variances in this neighborhood over the past handful of years, which allow this type of use, most recently, as we've noted, in Chippewa on the corner of Jackson and Ridge. Which, by the way, I think that building went in very nicely with the neighborhood and they, that stayed it very well. And I think it's a compliment to the candidate with national across the street. Any comments around the character of the neighborhood?
I think, going with the character is, I think, it makes it.
Uh, the hardship is self-created, as much as I enjoy what I write here, but I think it's self-created. That was a joke.
It wasn't true.
Okay. Anyone have final thoughts about those or questions?
I did hear that Brewster's most affected by this development. And she's had, we have developed a lot, we've definitely made a lot for years. So I think that's, maybe that's most affected by this.
I don't think traffic to this implication will cause an issue for Brewster's. If anything, I would think of the traffic from Brewster's to this particular business would be more of an issue just, you know, when the little game gets out, everybody goes to Brewster's.
You mean they're not going to get their oil changed?
No, I'm just saying, I'm going to go get my oil changed, I don't think they want to do that.
I'll, I'll just make one final thought or comment. I, I guess for me personally, I'm looking at this more holistically in terms of that parcel being marketed for a greater period than the two and a half years. The long, the length of it being closer to ten plus years in terms of what you tried to, what you potentially envisioned for that parcel. The market reach that was listed in the CBRE ladder for the period of twenty-fourteen to twenty-fifteen in the other book, specific to the targeted allowed uses, and you had no traction on that. To me, it carries over to this as well, even though it's a shorter window after you said you did not write other keys for life store. So I just wanted to go on record for that. Related to the hardship. With that, anyone willing to, anybody not willing to make a motion? If we do make a motion, we'll recruit this once again. Recommend we adopt the items two, three, I'm sorry, one, two, three, and four of the letter from Woods, probably at the government, dated March twenty-second, twenty-third. And the findings and comments we admitted to the four key criteria of early use variance. Yes?
Yeah, and, uh, motion to, is motion approved, sir?
Motion approved.
Approved?
I just read through the, the, the.
Top of my head, motion. Motion approved, take five oil change located at ten forty-five Ridge Road. I think Quaterdoven requesting use variance will allow construction of a sixteen ten square foot oil change facility on one and a quarter acre parcel, having SPL oh seven nine, one five one, eight zero zero nine located in an MCA intensive commercial district under section three fifty dash. The code of the downed Brewster.
Second. Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlow?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Newt?
Aye.
Mr. Sutola?
Aye.
All right. You've got your variance of conditions applied, must pay an officer. Clean it up. One year minimum construction, that's expiring on here from this evening. And obviously, all the steps I could do to proceed with the planning process.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. Okay, next item is table item number two, Redbonn Farms, three seventy-five Webster Road.
Redburn Farms, Mr. Chairman, the note.
Wait, we, we're not reading this into the record, first?
Redburn Farms, located in three seventy-five Webster Road. Epicurea is requesting a special permit to allow seasonal use of an existing barn, some special events space, and three point eight acre parcel, having SPL number zero five zero point zero three dash one dash thirty-four point two, located in the Arrowsy residential district under section three five zero dash one zero three in the code of the town of Webster.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as you know, I have submitted plans and application for material requesting approval for a special use permit within the development where we live at three seventy-five Webster Road, called Redbonn Farms, three seventy-five. This specific existing structure bond is shown on the plans make part of this application, which each one of you do have. The existing bond will be used for special events such as weddings, anniversaries, and charitable events, et cetera. It will be used seasonally only from April first through October thirty-first. A copy of the client's rental contract, which is extensive, is attached to the application, which I did provide all of the board members. Please see the highlighted areas of the client's agreement, which will clarify most questions the members of the board might have for its safe operation, not only for the clients, but for the surrounding neighbors. The bond is for rent only, and the area around the bond is cited on the map, which I presented, which each of the board members do have to accommodate twenty vehicles on the property itself. No cars are permitted to park by contract on the agreement on Route two fifty at all. They're not allowed. Additional parking is made, will be made available by the client off-site. They can provide shuttle service for their customers if they so desire. But again, absolutely no cars will be permitted on Route two fifty. Since we started renting it in two thousand and nineteen, since then, we've only had five events there. Two in two thousand and nineteen, one was a graduation party, which my neighbors across the street actually attended. Then we had a wedding, there were sixty-five people at the wedding. And then, of course, two thousand and twenty, we had COVID. Two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, we had three other events. They were all charity events. The first one was Gigi's Playhouse, which is a Down syndrome organization, which takes care of Down syndrome children. They have a charity fundraiser there on our property, which, needless to say, my wife and I did not charge. The Webster Kiwanis Club also had a special event there for special children. They had a pizza night there that was held. Also, there was a event held for Hocus Pocus for those challenged children, where my wife and I put up a, a large screen so they can watch Hocus Pocus and they can dress up in their costumes. And the third one was Troop Three Three Three, which is another charity event where they had, you know, pizza night. But that is all the events that we have had since my wife and I decided that we were going to rent out the property. And we have informed the Lions Club as well as the Rotary or any other charity event, that from the farm laws, if they need to use the property for any type of fundraiser for charity event, they're more than happy to do it, that, and no charge to, to my wife or myself. But the contract that we put into place, the very first party that we did have, to be honest with you, there were sixty-five guests there and some of them did walk on two fifty. And I realized at that time that that was not going to, that was not going to work. Because if I certainly was a neighbor in the area, I certainly wouldn't want the cars lined up on two fifty, which would cause some harm to cars passing in or bicycle riders or people that were walking. So in two thousand and twenty-one, my wife and I decided to put an extensive contract that the, the clients must sign. And as you know, the board has a discretion that any time that contract is not abided by, can, or board, whatever decision that you make today, if you approve it, you can actually void the contract. I'm open to any questions that the board might have?
Could you restate the whole of?
And if you don't mind, I do wear hearing aids, Mr. Chairman. If you could speak a little bit louder because I can't turn them up any louder than what they ought to do, apologize.
I think you just restate, how, how many events you've had since?
Five.
Five total?
Five, three. Three of them were for charity and the other two were paid.
And that's since what date?
I'm sorry?
That's since what date again?
Two thousand and nineteen, there was a wedding and there was a, um, um, graduation, forgive me. And the other three were, you know, charity events. We didn't hold anything for twenty twenty-three, and I think we didn't do anything for twenty twenty-two. Was the town asking this? I mean, if I'm not, is that correct? Yeah, twenty twenty-two, correct. When I found out, when the, actually, the, the, the fire department actually came by and a very nice gentleman, and he was inquiring, so I let him in the barn. So he said, you know, you need a couple of fire extinguishers or so. But he said, Roger, what I would suggest you do, you really have to go before the board and get a special permit. I said, oh, yeah, we would be happy to do that. So at that point, my wife and I shut it down. We didn't do anything for twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three at all. And like I said, it's only from April to October. And I would like to tell you that we'd like you rented every week, but needless to say, we certainly don't want to party on our property every single week. I mean, so we're going to be very, very restrictive. How many parties do we actually have from September and so on, so forth?
And what, what complaints have, were received by the town?
We have no record of receiving any complaints.
You just, you were self-aware that the parking extending on the two fifty was going to be an issue? There was no?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Correct? But not, there was no, at least we're not called, there wasn't reported to the town?
No. Once we, once we had that very first wedding in, in twenty nineteen, we had about twenty-five dirty cars actually lined up on two fifty. And my wife and I said, this is not, this is not good. We have to figure out another way to do this. So that's when we decided, and after COVID, that the client would have to sign a contract that under no circumstances they can not park a car on two fifty or else they'd have to leave the premises immediately. You don't want to put anybody's life in danger. There's a lot of bicyclers, a lot of people that walk with their dogs there, and some might want them to walk on, in two fifty. Because that road is heavily trafficked, especially with a lot of motorcycles and trucks.
Could you state the occupancy of that building?
It's a, no more than eighty-five people. No more than eighty-five people will fit on that property. We will not allow more than eighty-five people. The wedding that we did have, there was sixty-five people.
Have you considered adding parking? I see drivers, I don't.
I'm sorry?
Have you considered adding some parking space or people parking?
Um, actually, if, I'm not sure if you're very familiar with the property, but it's, I, it's such a picturesque property. I think I would not want to do any additional parking. I'd rather not have it. I would rather the board tell me, forget about it, don't do it, because it would just ruin the look of the property. For the one day for twenty cars, it's, it's comfortable and it looks okay. If I added additional parking there, it's, my wife and I would never do that.
So the, the contract says twenty-five cars. And I know the property pretty well, it's a beautiful barn, it is a beautiful property. Based on the map that you provided and highlighted space of the location of the parking, the parking alongside the driveway, there's a fairly steep deep line there. So was the intent to Parrow Park there? That's one question. And then the area that you're showing, which would be, I guess, to the north of your driveway, that area at least highlighted, there's no way you're going to be able to hit twenty-five cars there. Now, that went all the way up to, I believe you have another more modern barn on the roadside of your property, if I remember correctly.
I should have, that, that's an excellent point. What I actually should have done is when you do come into the driveway, the parking that, that, that is highlighted in yellow was on the right, but you can actually park cars on the left side of the driveway as well as in the driveway itself. And in, behind the house itself, there is, we do have a gravel parking that fits actually two cars and it can double up into four. So to be honest with you, twenty-five would be pushing it. I think twenty would be more comfortable. And if the board decided that twenty cars with the, with the extended property, I would limit it to twenty. If you want to limit it to fifteen, I'll limit it to fifteen. Then they have to use off-site parking.
So the other question I have, the contract says no more than twenty-five you have to, and off-site parking, and this is where I'm a little confused in the contract. Is, are you providing the off-site parking, not the transportation?
No, no.
So you're?
The client itself has to provide the off-site parking. So whatever, where they can find parking, the town has parking all over, it's parked all over the place, thank goodness. And, but they have to supply a shuttle service. There are some weddings that I've been to, actually, they don't want you on the property, but they actually would meet in the parking lot or in a park. And there's a shuttle service that takes you to and from, that runs, that runs maybe one hour or two hours or something. I've been to maybe two weddings like that, yes. And listen, I'm sure, we've had a number of calls where, going back, where that was, you know, a hindrance. Nobody wants to have shuttle service. So it's going to be limited use, it's, you know, mostly. It's, you know, mostly 25, 30 people have a small party and things like that. You know, the barn was built in 1900, and how this came about is that my son, at that time, we had, of course, a wedding on his property. It was only about 25 people there. And that's how this actually came about. The wedding planner said, gee, this is such a beautiful property. You should think about renting it out to parties. So I didn't give it a thought until about a year later. And then I said, this is something, what we want. But the barn is an historic barn. It was awarded, an award by the Webster Historical Society, all over, about a museum. And if you ever been in the barn, I renovated, it's absolutely a beautiful work of art. Whoever built that is just incredible. And just to let it sit there and not be appreciated is a shame. As a matter of fact, it was featured on Channel 10. Kuchko, is that the gentleman's name on Channel 10? How do you pronounce his name? Kuchko, Kuchko actually came on the property and actually took some photos of it. And he was impressed. And he actually put it on, he featured it on Channel 10. And the barn was also featured in the Webster magazine on the front page. And Tom Marley, who is a barn guy, who photographed barns all over the country, all over, all over New York State, actually put a beautiful picture of the barn. So it's such a very picturesque place. So you just want to share it. You know, if we could make a couple of dollars on the fine, and if we don't, that's fine. Happy to leave it. No pressure. Try to be as honest as I can.
The barn itself, and I remember probably reading through the contract, there's no water use, there's no?
They have to supply, there's no, there's no water, there's no bathroom. They have to bring, when they had the wedding, they had these nice water potties that you put in back of the house, that you can't see actually from the road. They have to bring all the bottled water. Any liquor, they have to have a licensed liquor license on premises. They have to have, show ID. Like I said, the contract is about that big. You know, it's pretty, pretty.
I read it, so I?
Yeah, we were pretty.
Pretty thorough.
Pretty thorough.
I'm curious to hear what the public comment is. So at this point in time, please step up for public comment. If you care to speak for or against this application, if you can step up the podium and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Eldon Tripp, and I live at 378 Webster Road, directly across from the party barn. And I've been there for 34 years, 48 in total, in the town of Webster. I've worked 30 years for Monmouth County Parks Department. I was a park supervisor. And I've had many experiences with both good parties and bad parties. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Webster Union Cemetery. And I know the chair sent a letter to the board with his concerns about parking and people walking through the cemetery. And I myself have concerns about the noise levels on the party when you're putting a loved one in the grave, right in the cemetery, which is right next door. The other thing with increased traffic is there's, there's burials possible every single day of the week. And there's big processions and cars are passed by house in a line slowly turning into the cemetery itself, which can be rather hazardous on that road because the people have been driving crazy there. I'm essentially against the red fire special events permit. In my experience, I've only had special events permits per each event, so I knew what was going on. This is, this is like more of a blanket order to cover the entire season. Is it permit or variance on zoning?
It's a special permit, not a special event permit. And a special permit can be conditioned by the board.
It's not a variance.
It's not a variance. It can be revoked at any time.
And last year, when I was, I was living there, there were two weddings and one graduation party. I missed the second wedding because I was up in Anorax camping. The first one wasn't bad, but the graduation party there, there was cars everywhere. It was, it was disastrous as far as parking on the side of the road. The noise pollution, I've said that before, about the cemetery having a burial there with a party going on next door, which would be a major distraction. And to the neighbors, as far as that goes. The there's, the parking at Roger's Farm is, as you know, very limited. And it's, it's not unusual when something comes late, if they miss the shuttle bus, to park anywhere they can, which is on the road. Is it going to be special police? Is the road going to be posted with no parking signs in front, especially down in front of the cemetery? And the other concern I have is the value of our property. If this is a commercial enterprise, and Priceless is right on the website. I know if I would have moved in, I moved in in 89, I wouldn't have bought the property if I were to own a party house across the street, not at all. I moved out of the city for, to come to Webster to live in peace and quiet in the country. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, we're still open for public?
Oh, I apologize.
Hello, I'm Chairman. It's time to speak. Mark and Kathy Morse, who live at 362 Webster Road, across the street from the proposed barn to the town. So we just don't believe a commercial activity like this belongs in residential area. In the summer, we like to sleep with our windows open. And if there's the occasional graduation ceremony at Woodhall, you can hear it. And this is going to be much closer. So we have concerns around noise, the lights, and the traffic. The traffic on our road is crazy. This is just going to add to it and I think put some people at risk if they've got a lot of folks going in and out of that location. So those are our main concerns, you know? Noise detracting from the character of the neighborhood, right? The neighborhood is established as a residential area. You know, we just think it's going to be a big distraction to the neighborhood.
So this is, I mean, it started operation in 2019. My understanding, I think what I heard, is that the applicant recognized after an event, or maybe two, that the parking situation was going to become an issue. And maybe he strengthened up this contract and limited it to 25 cars for onsite parking only. If that is the case, and that's police very well, 25 cars on Route 250 is pretty much nothing, right? Would you agree to that?
Sure.
So let's take the traffic out of the equation, because that, to me, is not, it's not even relevant. If it's police law. So help me understand, beyond the traffic, is it cars parked in as long as it? When you say light pollution, I believe there's been outdoor lights there or what I would call bright lights. It's more toned down. What do you mean in terms of light pollution?
Just from the traffic, cars in and out?
From the 25 cars?
Yeah.
Now, I just want to make sure I understand your location. You're at 362?
Yes.
So across the street from the cemetery, and about three doors down, and across the street from the barn.
Right. We can see the barn, light a sight from our living room windows. So you would just prefer not to have, actually, no ideas is the main thing?
Yes, what I'm hearing is it's a residential district, if you'd like to state that. I'm interpreting for you.
Yeah. That's the main thing.
I would like to add to, if it took a fireman to come and suggest that he needed to have a variance to have parties, his son-in-law is a fireman. So he should have been aware of that it needed to have a special permit. He should have been aware of special safety conditions that he all of a sudden became aware of later. That's a big question. Also, during the summer, addressing that there was no complaints when there was parties before, there are graduation parties one weekend here and there on 250. So it is common to see one or two houses that have cars parked. So to complain about one party was not really obvious at that point. But if this is going to be every single weekend, maybe twice a weekend, it is going to be an issue to the neighbors. The noise level is going to be a concern to us. And again, it was established as a residential area, not a commercial area.
So the applicant had stated that his contract in his time period for his events is, I believe, April 1 to October 31? If this, if this board were to move forward with the approval or issuance of a special permit and limited it to, let's say, six events during that window, is that something, how do you feel about that?
You know, who knows what's going to happen in those six events? But I think some sort of limitation might be a step in the right direction. But still, the board needs to be able to respond to complaints about individual parties.
Let's clarify, this board is not going to respond to complaints. So that would be a couple of other town entities.
If complaints are allowed, right? Yeah, I don't expect you to come over and show.
No, I don't know if these folks realize that this use permit is subject to review by the board. Maybe, maybe after a year, whatever, whatever the board decides.
Yeah.
And if the neighbors are in complaint, that's a technical motivation for Mr. Oz to run a good operation. Obviously, he does comply to himself, the neighbors. Even if he does concede a special permit, it's subject to legal protection.
Right, I understand that.
So I'll address that limiting it to six events. I still think that that sets a very bad precedent. It was a residential neighborhood. I've lived there 19 years. I've seen the changes. Why should a residential neighborhood now serve one person, change the whole dynamic of the area?
Well, let me ask this question, maybe also for the personnel gentleman that came up and spoke. This was in operation in 2019, and I asked Mr. Artuso if there were any complaints. And there was one complaint that was fielded by the town. Did I, did I understand that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
How come, if you live right across the street and you live directly across the street from us, how come you never complained about this, knowing it was a residential district? I personally, I saw a neighbor that started throwing events in their barn, probably would have said something to the town, what's going on? Why are we in 2023? And now there's a concern? I'm confused.
So we assumed, we assumed it was his family that was in there.
He's had five events.
There's no signage outside?
If you're going to speak, you need to stop.
So I had to open up to people that were?
No, I was generally.
We were unaware that he was even going to make this an event party barn until one of our neighbors came and told us. So the two parties that we noticed there, we thought they were family. A matter of fact, we know his son-in-law got married at that barn. So how would we know that it now has become an event barn? There are graduation parties around?
I think you see my point.
But if this happens every weekend, unless it's a weekend now, it's a lot different.
I don't want this happening every weekend either, I'm hesitant. I understand. Okay, we understand your points. Thank you very much. Next, please, please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Mitch Daly. I'm the homeowner at 1340 Sage Brookway. Our property is located directly behind 375 Webster Road, so our backyard completely abuts that property. I'm here to express my opposition to the application for the special use permits for special event space at 375 Webster Road. As the board is aware, 375 Webster Road is owned within the R1 Single Family Residential District. Within that district, there are nine permitted uses. Two of them, Communication Towers and Bed and Breakfast, are permitted on the issuance of a special use permit by the town and zoning boards respectively. Permitted uses do not include special event spaces by special use permit or otherwise. In fact, special use permits for special event spaces do not exist within the town code. We contend that the zoning board appeals lacks the original jurisdiction to grant said permit, because this is not expressly delegated in the town code additionally. We'd argue that this application constitute a change of use on a state road, which should have triggered a review by the New York State Department of Transportation. Now, I don't know if that's happened, but it certainly wasn't in the application materials, which would have to be done to assess any impact on Route 250. Also, General Law 239M would require this application to be submitted to the county as a change of use on a state road. As of our attorney's last check with the county, this had not been done, which would also prevent the board from granting this permit at this time. Sent aside our questions about the authority of the zoning board in this issue. I think the application also fails to meet the standards that are outlined within the zoning code. Our neighbor spoke to it to some degree, but, you know, standard one states that uses will not interfere with the reasonable use of adjacent properties. I think we can objectively argue that having events within view and earshot of our back and front yards for seven months out of the year could have a reasonable impact on the enjoyment of our outside spaces. Standard four states that opposed use will not interfere with the preservation of the general character of the neighborhood in which the use is to be conducted. As mentioned before, our neighborhood is a residential neighborhood. It's quaint, it's quiet. The entire reason we brought our home is because of the privacy and the quiet that affords us. The applicants, in the material, see that the noise will be kept below 60 decibels and will not be heard around the boundaries of the property. 60 decibels is conversation level. It seems unlikely that at weddings, at parties with guests, the music playing, that volume stayed below that level and not go past the boundaries. In the application, and this is mentioned already, the events are going to be posted over a seventh month period that the property accommodates. I know they said 25, but apparently 20 cars in a lot, but feel the need or they're required to have additional shuttles to bring guests in. I don't think that it's conceivable that events of that scale, up to 85 people, as previously mentioned, over an extended timeframe, and as a comment was just made, you know, wanting to be done every weekend if possible, it's impossible to think that that wouldn't disrupt the general character of a residential neighborhood. I believe it's clear that not only does this application not meet the standards that are outlined within the zoning code, but that this board doesn't have the jurisdiction to grant said permit. As I alluded to before, we have already retained counsel to ensure this permit is granted. We will seek to commence judicial review. We will seek to commence judicial review through our Article seventy-eight proceeding. We feel we need to do what's necessary, necessary to maintain the character of our neighborhood, something that this board can easily do by denying this permit.
How long have you lived, did I hear from?
We've lived there ten years.
So you were there in twenty nineteen when these events occurred?
Uh, the, the events that you mentioned, yes.
And no issue from those three months?
I mean, we could hear them, yes. If you're asking, are we calling police? No.
I haven't just heard. Anything else? Okay, could the applicant please, is there anyone else here to speak for this application? So now we're going to close the public comment portion of this meeting. We're returning it back to the board, and the applicant, if you could step up. Out of curiosity, knowing that you've got neighbors at Sage Brookway, Webster Road, a couple of them have stepped up to the podium and spoke this evening that are in objection to this. I, I'm just curious why you would want to entertain this type of venue in a residential district?
Dave Bard, who's our neighbor, I actually live right next to Dave, as I mentioned. I had approached him, and he was actually at the graduation party we have. And he's been there since we've had the five parties, and he's never expressed. And there is a neighbor on the corner of Sage Brook that I did give you a letter from him. A young couple that's right on the corner of Sage Brook, who has no objections to us having, which I provided a letter to the, the barn. I know it's, when I tell you that we don't want to rent this every single weekend, because we certainly like our privacy ourselves. So I can assure you, whether it's in the contract, if the town would like to limit the amount of parties I would have, I would be more than happy to do that. Because this is not something that, how can I say this? It's not something I'm looking to make a living on. It's more for the enjoyment of the property, and like I said, three of the times that we rented it was for a charity event. And if I could, and if I could give it to a charity event once a month, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Two things come to my mind. We dealt with a very similar issue on Lake Road. I'm going to guess, it was a little, we were here at the time, and maybe Mr. Verone. It was called the Webster House. And the Webster House, it was more than a bed and breakfast than a, a party house. And they held a lot of events there. And it became a significant nuisance to the community and into that area in particular. And did end up resulting in multiple calls, if I remember correctly, to the town complaining about the events that were taking place in this residential district. Event, we'll call it an event center. So that's one comment. Could we give us a little bit of, of history there on such?
Can we just shut them down based on the impact of it?
Secondly, I am quite fearful of the precedent that this would set in the town of Webster. Whether it's a larger lot at four acres, or it's a smaller lot at one acre or a half acre, to have recurring interest in special permits being granted by this board for these types of activities. I personally live on a large lot, in a large lot community of three acres, and pretty much everybody in that development has whole armed buildings. And I personally would say, are you kidding me? If somebody came in and wanted to hold an event center on their property in my development. So I feel for the neighbors in terms of what they would like to see in their area, in the area, their envelope that they live in. I think it would send a significant message to the town and set a precedent that me personally, as a zoning board chairman today, am not really interested in people playing on this or people playing. I will turn it over to the other members of the board for their input and opinions.
No, I think, I agree. I've driven down two fifty when there was a party there, and cars lined both sides of it. I can only imagine that, and I do also live in a large lot area. Whole barns on everybody's property, so I completely agree with everything you're saying. You know, looking at the application itself, the twenty-five cars, I don't see it feasible on that property in and of itself, being that there's no water usage, raises concerns of sanitary concerns for me on the property. Yes, I understand that you can bring a quarter John's and other things. There, there's a slew of concerns that I have. And for me, if I was on that property line, and I drove that neighborhood this weekend, and you can see that barn, you can see the ponds from every one of the immediate neighbors. And whether it be weddings, whether it be graduations, if there's a DJ, that noise is going to travel regardless. So being a residential, I, I would have to say there are things concerned. And then what precedent does it set? Second, I think that you said.
I see, I see how you've tried to restrain things in the contract, and I appreciate the effort that went into this contract, but at the end of the day, who's going to face this contract? You? Are you going to go out there with a noise bill simulator to see if you exceed sixty decibels? Are you going to be the one that is telling them that there's twenty-six cars when twenty-five are allowed? And then how are you going to make sure that they remove that one car from the property? Nine o'clock comes around, maybe you're at a friend's house, or you're in, in the house, and now it's nine thirty. Who's, who's constantly policing this? That, that's another concern that I have, because there are a lot of restrictions in this contract. And, you know, take a significant effort to, to police everything that you've got in, in a residential district. Mr. Verone or this one?
I, we have a lot of neighbors that back up to us, and I actually enjoy it when I hear neighbors having a party. Being uncontrarian, I actually like hearing people have fun, enjoy it. But what you said is true. I, I was a little concerned myself about the sanitary condition. You have six to eighty people with a house. Women don't really like using houses. It's a, it's a, it's a tough one, because if the gentleman said he belonged to Lions Club, he said, "Guys, come out, come out over by barn, we're going to have a get together there." That's just a social meeting, it's not business. And if that was the case, I don't think we could stop him. When he's getting money for what he's doing, now it becomes a business. He would be motivated to probably, he says it's more of a hobby than a business or a, or. Let's face it, once word gets out, this could grow, it could grow substantially. So I, I, I understand what the neighbors are feeling. So we're, we're at a balance. I understand what this gentleman's feeling, I understand what the neighbors are feeling. What we have to do is work for the town, so I'd have to do, yeah.
To that point, I mean, there is a website, there is pricing, right? So it is a business, right? While, I know the gentleman mentioned charity events, I'm all for charity events. Typically, what more subdued than graduation parties, and it's the one that I've been to. But it is organized business, right? There's, there's a website, there is pricing, there is, it organized business, so. It's not, I don't know, I love going to, going to the barn.
I agree with all of the board members' comments. Specifically, Mr. Verone, he was talking about if he belonged to a club, wants to stop it. At what point, and I don't know if we can answer, we're not going to answer that tonight, does it, if he wanted to just let charitable organizations use his facility for free? The, the, the lack of sanitary facility, including a water toilet, or even the fact that the food catering had to be brought in and had to be taken into account. You can get that readily out of Northbound's park, kind of the same, the technical restrictions. If you, if you didn't want the bathrooms to lock prior postseason. So that doesn't bother me as much as, as you said, the residents' noise. Because you did buy a residential area, there is that expectation that it's going to be used in a residential manner. So, I mean, I'd be all for, I don't know, I guess we have the ability to do that, but, if you wanted to let organizations use it at no cost, which he's doing now anyhow, is there a limit? I don't, I don't know what the law is, but, you know, at what point is it a business if you're not charging? You know, is there anything to do that you can make sure that the respective residents are also allowing him to use his property the way he wants to use it? Without, without disturbing his neighbors?
I guess, I, from a ZDA standpoint, I, I might suggest to you to go to the town and see if there are other avenues to pursue this venture. But at this point, this evening, I'm not willing to vote in favor in condition to a special permit, me personally. I will not speak for the other board.
Well, if I'm looking at it, the town allows minor and major home occupations. Does this look like a major home occupation? Where you're not using the home, you're using the building on the premises. It's not using equipment that is out of the ordinary for the home. I think the lack of sanitary facilities probably would limit a lot of accommodations. I'm certainly not going to rent it for my son's wedding. Is it something that you could rent for, I don't know, Cub Scout? I don't even know which little boys to get or whatever. But, but there are home occupations that are permitted. The special permit is the avenue that allows a home, a major home occupation to be conditioned and allowed in a residential area. So could it be construed as that?
Is there a definition of major home occupation?
Yes, with section of the code. I'm still on chapter two two five, so.
Three fifty thirty-seven, what's that? Yeah, I can, I can. Three fifty thirty-seven. But that's not what we're here for. It requires a approval very similar to this. But, but for this evening, we're here specifically, it's not. My recommendation to you is to go back and possibly look into other, then, other options in terms of the town, town code, maybe check with Mr. Artuso. Yeah, but unless somebody else is willing to take a motion, I don't know. We can table it, we can not deny it, if you'd like. We'll put it tabled, so you won't have to re-apply and do some investigation.
You know, to be perfectly honest with you, and I think I'm speaking for my wife, as much as I would like to have it now, I do respect my neighbor's opinion, especially Danny, the legislature's history for me. I respect the chairman and the board members who, who gave advice. So I would like to withdraw my application for the benefit of my neighbors and the benefit of the board. I certainly don't want the town of Webster to go into any legalities because my wife and I decided not to go on. So I respectfully would like to rescind my motion and let it go.
I highly respect your comments. I think that's a stand-up position, and I commend you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the first scheduled item, G and H Auto Sales.
Thank you. I appreciate your opinion. Thank you.
G H Auto Sales located at ten twenty-one Five Mile Line Road. The applicant is T S B Engineering, who is presently working on a new project. He's been hired for fifty years, associated with construction of a six space parking area for displaying a vehicle sale on a point seventy-four acre parcel in S P L number zero seven nine thirty-one eight dash one dash three located in A C O. Commercial Outdoor Storage District under section three five zero dash two zero of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening, I'm a wallpaper of T S B Engineers, which being tonight is the owner, G H Auto, Mr. Alden King. And as stated by the board number, we're here tonight for a front setback variance. Would they recall, we started this, purchased the property in two thousand and twelve? Yeah, it's been over ten years he's had the property. And we're actually, he came to the board back then, in fact, if you look at the map I submitted, you'll see that we received some area variances for the property back in two thousand and twelve. We've also obviously been in a planning board at that time. And he purchased it for his auto sales. And he also uses it for dial-up on the inside and electronics installation, that type. Back then, we got the approval for the backyard, he used it as a parking area. And he was going to have a sign, monument sign in the front yard. And as time went by, he was basically selling most of his cars through the internet. Like people nowadays, everybody kind of lists them on the internet, and people buy cars. You see all these different things groom and everything else. It's out there, you can buy a car and sit, sit here all day. You know, over the course of time, he's going by, he's thinking, it'd be nice if he had display vehicles in the front. You know, parking for customers in the front, just the display for six vehicles, we're calling it, that's what we fit. And right in front of the building, we presented a planning board last month, and we received a positive recommendation. We had a concept meeting, and they should have sent you a letter regarding this application in support of the area variance. And again, we would like to pursue that, obviously. As time has gone by, he thinks, you know, that he's actually made statements to me, and that potential buyers would have difficulty when they spoke with him on the phone. And he says, okay, well, I'm down to the property, and I can show you the car. And they end up driving right by, and they end up on the corner lot, because their cars are right up front, and they got to split very high, and boys familiar with.
And they bought, and they bought one from the corner lot?
Yeah. Did it? Did they really? So he's got some difficulty there, and obviously, the building, pre-existing, and setback fifty-seven feet from the property, obviously, it's a converted, a single-family home. And he purchased it back in two thousand and eleven, I think it was, from Vision Automotive, which I did work for Dave Edwards back then, when we did the Ford site on Ridge Road. And he purchased that property at that time, not knowing if he could use it or not. He said, "They can borrow it." I don't know how many years Dave had it. And so then Holden came along, and he purchased it for his small operation versus what Danny's Vision Automotive turned into. So basically, that's, that's basically in a nutshell what we're looking for, is a front setback variance. Obviously, we have to go back to the planning board, and I think they're going to have some comments regarding landscaping and the like.
Dash, how far north on Five Mile, there's the C O District.
There are two properties north of this one, and then it becomes residential after that. Can we show the zoning line? Correct, it's two miles north of it. It's correct, it's two miles north of it.
Sure, well, I said that part. I don't remember.
No, we've never seen that. We've never done anything.
I believe you, no. I think when Ridge Road and Five Mile line intersection was reconfigured in the past, I actually think there was a taking of land for that corner property, which is why there is really no buffer at all, a very small...
Even if you eliminate the lane, it's only like fifteen feet.
Yeah, and that used to be the gas station back then, there wasn't getting out on, same as it is now.
If I could see where it was to this gentleman, he was visiting that.
I can't, I can't differentiate from the natural parcel to the parcel, the parcel to the parcel itself, to the parcel to the null and nothing. You're going to be out twenty-five foot there, as Mr. Brown pointed out, so...
Twenty-five feet would be to the...
Edge of pavement.
With edge of pavement, right, but the vehicles would be another four feet.
Right, yeah.
You're going to park them closer to the building.
Correct.
It will just... You don't run up against the building, there's some, there's some map, right?
Correct.
But there actually looks like there's minimal, little system in those spaces.
That's why it would be just for display.
It's going to be made up as small as possible.
Right, and try to include it. Certainly isn't accurate, I don't know.
It's kind of, um, bound by the location structure.
Can't put them to the cell, can't put them to the... So you only got one spot to display on, which would be the...
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? No? Are you here for the hot dog cart? Well, you should have brought it.
I don't know what told me to, I... I tell you what, if I get the permission to guys come down to the park now, we're going to have to take the hot dog. But we're going to have to take the hot...
That works.
All right, so we're going to turn the discussion back to the board. No public comment on this one. For two of the NYCRR, section six-seventeen, any environmental vote, I'll make a motion protect you, secret. All in favor?
Well, what they're asking for is minimal display space between building and building, they cover as close to buildings as they possibly can. When I, I realize that the car dealer, you know, thank you, Josh, for something blue signs, but I wouldn't pull in their bike car because the visibility is just not there. So, in business, I understand, it's a request, and then look at this overhead picture here and the building on the corner itself, and there is some of the mirrors right up the edge of the pavement, not out of terror, it's, it's going, it's going, the line between commercial outdoor storage and residential is still a couple hundred feet from north, so we're not getting close enough. So, I mean, there's no environmental impacts, just a word of environmental impacts, there's no negative impacts, we don't have any objections from any neighbors, it's not out of terror for the neighborhood, you know, just trying to make a living selling mirrors and trying to remove the visibility, and it's as I said before, what they're asking for is minimal that you're not getting any close to, you know, the absolute... May I, I agree, the only question I have is, at least one of the attachments I have, has a, it's like a sign, is that already approved?
Yes, sir. Last month, we went to a planning board, and we illustrated it, obviously, and I submitted two sheets, and it's on the backside of this...
Gotcha.
Right, we got the sign approved last month, and they couldn't act out of the parking because obviously we needed the variance, so we'd have to go back to the planning board for site plan approval, but I did receive comments prior to that from town staff, and they'll, we're going to have to embellish the site with some last...
I was there, it's Sunday, so definitely approved that?
Yes.
And, 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 I'm very pleased, Mr. Brown, that, uh, I, by my house, the corner lot.
Right.
It's not the corner lot, and I can appreciate it, but plus I did definitely get a house. Make a motion? Sure. Okay, would I like to make an auction? Location by TSB Engineers, it's a long twenty-five-foot buffer area, fifteen years required, associated with construction of a six-bedroom area for display vehicles for sale on a point-seven-four acre parcel in that SPL number zero-seven-nine-three-one-eight dash one dash three located in a CO commercial outdoor storage district under section three-three-fifty-dash-twenty of the town roster.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Okay, you've got your variance within my feet, condition supply must obtain officer of the city, that's obviously going to stall the asphalt, or you've got some site work.
Correct.
So, and I guess I'd ask that, because if you don't hear me, the destruction is a fire one year and conceiving.
Correct. We'll be submitting back to the planning board for site plan approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one administrative matter. It's the Cub Dog Express Boot Cart.
Cub Dog Express Boot Cart located at Charles East Sexton Park, applicant Alan Estamiano is requesting a letter of recommendation from his own board of appeals to approve the interior vendor's license to allow the operation of food carts in the parking lot of Charles East Sexton Park in a forty-eight acre parcel in an SPL zero-seven-nine-point-zero-eight-dash-one-dash-fifteen located in the local office park district under section two-three-four-dash-five-D-sub-one-sub-B of the code of the town roster.
Thank you for listening to me. I own a little hot dog cart, I want to see a little picture of it, I think, putting it in a North Park, Charles, I know it's a little stupid, but, I think it'd be a great location, about a foot, a park, and everybody, and all of it, and I don't know what else to say, it's a hot dog cart. I hate to say it, but I only want to put a few hours, weeks into it, I'm a retired guy, and I figure I'll do that, I don't know. It's all pretty well sold, plenty for anything, sell hot dogs.
Could you explain the process?
Yep.
No, not here, not my hearing.
You're missing the problem.
No, I, I'm cracking my thumb up there. Yes, so, this type of vendor's license is issued to the town clerk's office, and we discovered as part of her approval process, it requires written recommendation by this board, it's only for appeals. It's not a variance per se, it's just a close evaluation for any potential negative impacts. And that's my understanding.
All right, I understood, this is the first time this has ever been asked?
To my knowledge, yes.
And...
First occasion, but you know what? We did get a second person who was looking to do something similar.
So, give him a nice spot. I worked too hard to get this spot.
So...
They probably heard me talking about it, and they probably wanted to...
So, ready for the application to Toby High Park?
Yes, it's always, it's only a four-by-eight, next to my old truck, I mean, self-contained, I got my own water, I can pass it in, my own beverage fill, I bring everything, you know, I even bought a refrigerator for back in my truck for food monkey and cooler, so it'll stay frozen, you know, it's all frozen. Actually, the prices went down from the menu, because I, last year, I used to buy grass-fed beef, of course, they don't sell it no more, so now I buy restaurant quality, so hamburger is going to go down two dollars.
Two dollars? Four dollars for hamburger?
No, two dollars less.
Four dollars?
Four bucks.
Wow.
Or instead of, you know, it's, it's almost more of a grass-fed beef, because, I mean, it's definitely a lot better than hamburger, but I also got a lot of complaints for price, so, anyways, let's go down a little bit.
Is the steak sandwich down four dollars?
Actually, actually, no, I...
That's the same.
Eight dollars, eight. Tacos can go down a dollar, the swagles gave me a better deal on tacos. I mean, my hot dogs are swagles, and my jumbo dogs are made by Kirkland, taste Kirkland, and, you know, like, they're pastel, and it's the same one you buy at Carsco, you know, go there and eat.
So, between the hours of eleven and three?
Yeah, lunch hour, it depends on the boat, I'd like to maybe go longer if I have to, but I was sixty-two-year-old back, I wanted to stay outside.
Based on that, it looks like you're taking two parking spots, one for the car, one for the...
Yeah, one for the truck, one for the car. I mean, I could go on the rest, I don't think, I don't think that'd be proper, you know?
Understood.
I guess my only question is, you know, what are the limitations? Not to him specifically, but you just mentioned that another person came in and required. To me, it seems like there would be identified spaces that would be available in this domain that are approved, pre-approved, and there's some kind of application process for it. Now, I don't think I, we probably don't have an issue providing letter, but this is a much bigger issue than this one part, because once one person does it, typically you're going to do it, and I'm pretty sure there's a board in the future that's not going to approve every person that comes in front of it, so if this is the process that has to take shape tonight, this should not be the process that appeals for the next one. And I'm not talking, I'm not, I'm not, don't take my own words directly towards you, but I'm just saying this can't be the process.
We'll have to bring in samples.
I'm going to always want to be the last guy who would, who would have something so good.
I have, sorry, Doc.
Yeah, well, and I, and I've never kind of heard of you, but I think, like, in the city, they have locations and the permits to location on...
It varies town from town.
Yeah, and every town does it differently, so it's my only...
Now, Rodney Point, Rodney Point, they do, they do the same thing you guys do, you gotta go a little farther, because they have the same problem, nobody's ever gone through this, but afterwards, but in Rodney Point, where I moved, was in last year, I had a private, private store, a parking lot, and the owner said I could park there, they all want me parked in there, no, not, no assholes, just on the, I had insurance, you can see I had insurance, I'll put you guys down if you want, it's a rider on it, and that's all I had to do in Rodney Point. Fairport, you know, just that they have, I've learned, well, Fairport, they have, you pick a spot in the fire marshal, that could see of the approval, but they all had the same thing, you know, it's the same. Here, I'm hoping to change the process, the way we do it is that we'll just get a permit for a certain area, it'll be okay, of course, I had to go and put it in the board every year, and all this, so...
Right, that's, that's the appropriate thing, the town that designate food truck or food cart areas and then have a process to reply, that's approved elsewhere outside of this board.
I'm there to for the new port.
That's a common issue. My only questions, slash, make of concern is the location across the parking lot from where people walk.
I, I figured, I don't care where I park, to be honest with you, I figure I'd put it there...
So, is that in the way?
For, for people that want to really walk, just walk, for they don't have to cross over the parking lot.
Okay.
You know, I figured it's more courteous for the other people, the park next to the, more towards the park, let's have it back at the park. I mean, I could go in front of it.
Once again, I don't think we should even be weighing in on this, I think that's the fire marshal and it's the, are the parks, the park, it's not, it's not our decision of where to put it, I, I don't even know why this is here, you know, I, I understand, no, I understand, I understand, it's one of these things that shouldn't have addressed years ago. I think at this point in time, the recommendation will be that, you know, my, my opinion would be the recommendation is, sure, we're fine with that, let the fire marshal and Pope Parks that are actually the ones that identify the location and it's not this one, not as close as...
The parks already approved were ironic, and I've already, that's why I started, but I started with the parks, they were supposed to send you a recommendation on there, I don't know if they did.
Yeah, it's in there, it's in our package.
They, they, they thought it was a great idea to have one there, the Cowley Park, they thought it was a good idea, Josh probably, I, I do somewhat.
Nice, tell them they want it.
So that's why I'm here, I mean, I want to be here.
Best idea ever.
Okay, so what do you need from, from this board?
No formal motion. I think if you just articulate support verbally, and capture that, get through the together letter, and we can have the chairman sign it, and then we would provide that to the town clerk, so that she'd be able to issue the actual motion.
I, I support it, provided the town identifies designated areas in the future for food trucks and food carts, and defines a process. Otherwise, I, I don't support it, because I don't want, I don't think it's appropriate for this board.
No, we very much want to formalize the process and create a system, which is unfortunately not there yet.
Yeah.
Well, health, health boards, and a lot of forever this sort of way I operate, so, I mean, they come and inspect me a couple, three times a year, they, you know, the food end of it, it's all, it's all done by the health board, I mean, it's not like I'm just out there with a grill, cooking hot dogs and hamburgers, I mean, I go through all the permits, you see, and all the permits, the county insurance, all my nerves.
Okay, I think we understand what is needed by the town, and we'll certainly provide that, unless anyone has an objection, I guess that's not against, yes, so, I... Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes this evening's meeting, thank you for watching. We have meeting president, he will prove that, I believe, three of us were at that meeting, so we can proceed.
That reminds him of a tour, you have?
I was...
Yes, you, three, all of us were at that meeting, University of New York.
All right.
Can you pour it all, we, I talked to town, we let the people show us what we're issuing, I had to fill over the, type of, so, very simple, first...
What?
Exactly, just something to laugh at, I was listening to the radio in Bloom's Yard, and they're talking about summer fun, and I heard we had fifty hot dogs last night, and I spoke to my son, I said, what, you've got a million hot dogs this time? I said, yeah, and he said, fifty hot dogs. So, so, being on this board is a really rewarding experience for me, and I'm winning Jimmy and...
And on winning, Jamie, and sure, they've been my mentors, they know that they are. I watch what they do, I learn a lot. I learned from government boards, I learned, I went to some hours, and I've never served that board like this before, so it's been a great experience for me. So I'm not gonna say I'm resigning, I'm still... I just want to thank everybody, Kevin, Josh, and John, people's constant support. It's been a great experience, you've got to applaud it, you've been a great addition for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I, I care like you're a lot of more people. I really gotta focus, I give up the general idea, but I'm not gonna... Unless I can do a great job, I think. You guys, you guys... Thank you, sir.
But, but when is, when is the meeting?
Today. Actually, Tom was supposed to do a...
Today is the last meeting. Doesn't he have to come?
Tom was going...